Both lots would have 30 feet of access to urban lane. A standard driveway width would be 24 feet. If council approves the abandonment request, but requires a replat, this is the approximate cost to extend utilities, approximately $200,000. We would like to request approval for requirement to extend utilities. To sum up, we request to approve the ordinance to abandon the right-of-way adhesions that determine this urban lane. If a replat is required, we request a waiver for the Unified Development Code requirement to extend utilities. We chose Shirts as our home when Charles retired from the Air Force in 2017. The approval of our request will give us the safe environment for our children and their friends to grow up in, and hopefully their children too. Thank you.
Second, I'll just want to comment regarding this subject.
Hi, I'm Tracy Burne, and I actually bought a property. Can you put a picture back up, please, again? So I can show you where I live, 36 Port One. Who else? I actually own the property adjacent to the home through the lot I returned to, one of the homes that we're looking at. And that roof that is back there has not been used by frankly. That is where my daughter learned to drive. And learn how they work. So I agree, it is an unused property. But the one thing that I would like to make sure that I don't go over or don't know, there are lots and lots of other rights. Yes, ma'am, I have. And there are quite a few different things there. The only thing I'd ask is that as we do develop and use, take into account that the people that live in the suburbs of Carolina, Wisconsin, actually pick up the remnants of that. And one thing I'd ask is to consider that.
I don't want to interrupt you guys. Go ahead. But I don't want to be filming your conversation either. Which, so, we're all at a loss. We got a bunch of people watching, right? So, there was a bunch of yelling inside, okay? We didn't see one police officer run inside here. What's the contingency? You guys are to be notified if they need you, and otherwise, you're fine unless you're notified of some criminal activity, which is the way it should be. Okay, everybody was freaking out, like, what? The police are just standing there, which they don't see a lot of times. You see it in the city of San Antonio, same thing. But like, for instance, Leon Valley, they got 19 cops there, ready to pounce, even when there's nothing going on. So anyway, you know, everybody was kind of on edge about that. And I was like, I don't think so. They'll have some other appropriate type of response, so, that's really good to see. I'm gonna go out and narrate that part of it, so, thank you. All right, I'll give you guys a little breakdown, so, there's quite a few people here that are here in protest of what happened. And it was obvious from the hit-go that folks were here for that purpose. You could see the worry on the city council's face, if you will, as people were coming into the city council. What's up, man? Go ahead, man. Go ahead. People are watching, it's all good?
You posted video the other night.
From here? Yeah. It's just somebody wanted to talk to me? Yeah, go for it, man. I'll talk to him.
You go in, or no?
Yeah, you can go in. You can go in and out, you gotta pass through security, but yeah, they're being totally cool so far.
Let me find.
It's TX Sheepdog. Or was I talking to you on the phone?
TX Dog.
TX Sheepdog.
Yeah, I sent you a message, because I was trying to reach out, trying to get your personal information.
And I haven't had a phone since Sunday. I busted my phone. I just got this one. I switched from Apple to Android. So I'm still figuring out how to use it, but I'm doing a YouTube livestream.
Okay, okay, okay.
You were, did you reach out to me on YouTube?
Well, YouTube, I tried to, I tried to, on YouTube, but I couldn't figure out how to do it.
Take down my number, man.
Go ahead.
It's 210-210-540-1726.
Your name?
My name is Jack. And you can just send me a text, that's the best way to communicate with me. You're local here?
Yep, my name is Kevin Rafer.
Kevin Rafer.
That was my son, yeah.
That was your son?
Yeah, yeah.
We need to talk.
Yeah.
We need to talk. Okay. All right.
So Jack, I mean...
Can people know who I'm talking to?
No.
Okay. That's not a problem.
She don't want.
Not a problem, Joe. Not a problem.
So, I will give you a call.
Let me mute this, hold on. Guys, I'm gonna mute it for a second.
Black lives matter!
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 No justice!
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 Black lives matter!
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 No justice!
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 Black lives matter!
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 No justice!
No justice!
No justice!
What are you guys doing?
Why are you all there?
Why are you all out of your way?
Why are you all running away?
Why are you all running away?
Why are you all running away?
Why are you all scared?
Why are you all scared?
Why are you all scared?
No justice!
No justice!
No justice!
No justice!
No justice!
Just let them say what they gotta say. If they don't go on, they won't go out. If they're not hurting nobody.
Black lives matter!
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 No justice!
No justice!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
Black lives matter!
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 You have a bullhorn? Bullhorn, give clear instructions.
Black lives matter!
Black lives matter!
We'll work on it. We'll get it done, Adam. We'll get it done, man. If they're not hurting nobody, let them yell. Let them yell.
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
If they're not hurting anybody, don't touch nobody. Use of force, use of force is why they're here. Okay. Use of force is why they're mad.
Black lives matter!
I just told them, don't touch nobody.
Black lives matter!
Black lives matter!
Black lives matter!
Please, please don't touch nobody if they're not touching you.
Black lives matter! No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
And you know I'm no harm. Okay. You're the one who did that, right? Yeah, I saw the video. I watched it on YouTube. I want to watch it on YouTube, it's gonna be her.
We are not here for nothing.
Don't do that, Dicky. Y'all want to be tall on the ground? Y'all want to be tall on the ground?
Use of force is why they're mad, don't touch nobody.
No justice!
No peace!
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 The guy in the suit is the mayor. The guy in the suit is the mayor.
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
That's the mayor, folks. That's the mayor coming out to talk to him.
Hey, man, I'm gonna go outside and cover anybody that's responding. And outside in the parking lot. You got inside here?
Yeah. Hey, Sarge?
What's up?
This is my colleague, he's doing the same thing I'm doing, just guarding him and everything, so.
Like I said, I recognize y'all, I watch YouTube a lot.
Right, right, right. I'm gonna make up to the front and get outside.
I've actually used some of y'all's videos for training you off.
That's good, we try to educate and make change that way, so, that's good. I'm gonna get out to the front. That's Dad right there. Hey.
Ladies and gentlemen, as they talk to the mayor, if y'all could please sit down. You're welcome to stand up at later. But we want to give him respect, give him respect.
Okay, but let me let everybody know that they're not getting so long.
Yes, ma'am, please, thank you.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Thank you, sir. I haven't said anything to you yet, but, use of force is why everybody's mad, no touching, no touching, no touching, no touching. Why would we? There was, one of the guys, that guy right over there, the corporal, he put his hands on somebody and everything almost went to shit, so, hold on. So, we need to get with everybody. People are going out. They said, the mayor said they gonna talk to the families, but he said they didn't grab whatever.
Just ask them to stay out, I'm gonna have to take them back.
You gotta go through security, you gotta do that.
Just ask them back.
You gotta get everybody, you gotta go through security. Seeing the people go back through security, they love them. We, I mean, leaving everybody, you gotta go through security, that's unreasonable. Just no touching. Thank you. That's not unreasonable. We got the mayor's attention, so, the mayor's talking to the family, they're allowing everybody to come back in and sit down, and...
It's kind of like voting. You have to be a collective voice.
Thank you.
And then you get to a great...
This is in response to what the citizens feel is an unlawful and excessive use of force by one of their, one or more of their police officers. And so far, the police chief has not been very responsive. This smells like a cover-up, and the people are here to make their voices known. All the cops here did pretty good. There was one corporal who decided he was gonna touch somebody and everything almost went to shit. But I think he learned real quick that touching people is not the answer. You don't push on people. It's just voices, it's just yelling. And so, for those of you that are just joining, it was a city council meeting in Shirts. There's a bunch of folks here that are upset about some excessive use of force against Zeki Rafer. And they were here to let their voices known, they began to speak out in the city council meeting, the city council meeting stopped, the city officials were ushered to the back. I think their whole department is here now. All the officers did fairly well in the face of the protest and yelling. There was one officer who did not. He decided he was gonna lay his hands on somebody, but he quickly learned that that was a bad idea. So, the mayor agreed to give the father of the guy that was beat up some time. They're meeting with them now, and they're allowing everybody back inside, as long as they go through security and get screened, which, you can see they're doing that in a pretty efficient manner. It's not something that you would find in Leon Valley. So, anyway, that's another story. But so far, so good. As of right now, I would say that the police department here, the officers in the city are respecting free speech. There have not been any arrests, there haven't been any use of force or anything like that. Everybody's doing pretty good. I think this is the last of folks coming in right now. SE Ecstasy Perez is on the inside with the camera, PMP News is also here, and we're, we have all angles covered. This is the last of folks here. So who's in charge of the officers here? Is that the sergeant? Is that the highest ranking person here?
No, I'm not sure who the highest ranking is, they've been inside, they just called.
Who's the most senior officer out here?
I'm not sure. I'll be a senior officer. I'm one of the older ones here. One of the problems I saw... We need to go ahead and show that, so that they can... Yeah, you can say no. One of the problems I saw in that whole video was that nobody seemed to be in charge. So, you know, it'd probably be a good idea to like, know who's the most senior out here, and it'd be like, the most senior would take charge. That way, one person could get clear, concise instructions, you know. Go, go. You guys seem right, go back inside.
Yes, sir.
That's really the issue. And so, that's the main thing that the staff are...
I'm not, I'm not too long. They didn't get here in time to say that. There's still...
Frankly, the scene didn't prove that the purpose here is that referring to your rules, that to some degree complicate that?
I think that...
And then the property under law, and covers up the city, really...
Technically, they do that in the beginning, but I think they might make an exception today. I think you need to speak.
That's a big issue that we got. The concern is we repeat the word case necessarily, but we feel like a lot of companies have high levels of issues, and that's why staff say, let's see if we can find a way to do something different, that's the license. Because at our position, correct, you're sort of wasted one, that sits out there, video of the law, like, that creates other issues. And so, with a license agreement, is a way to, we put that on the top of the property, so they can maintain it. They can, we think it's something that could replicate another property.
Didn't you start from...
And then as we work, try to come to some resolution, you know, we're going to point out on the opposite side of the parkway, where the developer is situated.
Okay, there you go.
That takes care of that. We talked to council about free way of handling, we can be there. And so, the subject for your license agreement, obviously, allows us to use that property, allows us some work for this. And then, you know, maybe one day we'll stand up here saying, hey, at this point, you can start vacating these driveways, and we take some property, and of course, we'll know what solution we put in. But our concern is, again, somebody comes in tomorrow, wants to bail into some thing, is opposition allowing, when we have a reservation, we're going to say, all right, perfectly. That's the old concern. I just, I don't fully understand any concerns. My initial, my initial was that you said, we're worried that because we're taking actions on this property, we need further action, which means that the property owners are going to property owners, and purchase these lots. I think the answer is, is, social law, we say, we hear the social law, city approves the law, the assumption is, all the provisions access and first argument that they're connected, and that the city would take the action, or you'll have property, and thus, let's say, purchase of the asset. And that would mean, it's not a new way to set up a business, and it's regulated forward, and it's like, city, have a look, deal with it, but that we made a goal, we made that, made a decision, that's something that we want. Well, I guess, my, because I'm a homeowner in the Bronx, I know ours, it's something that we manage, and my things, problems we want to... Someone that, also see there was a waiver that was outside, or...
There's the spirit of law.
And I think that's part of the problem, that some folks that, they're a little bit, and some folks, they're a lot, and some folks, they say, hey, I'm gonna go through the way on this one. And in the end, what do we do? And that's the same thing. Maybe you're four years, but this is the first time, and I handle the case. How, how ends up, the problem is, is, so, I would say, I don't know that we can see the right-of-way adhesion request there, but I would say that staff, fairly often, deals with property owners in these areas, so, for instance, you recall the presentation of free way of handling, and the challenge is there, we've not, we've come back to say, hey, there's anything going on, because of the challenge. So, again, is it standard law? It's not in the law. But I think, again, it was something that staff had concerns about it, and because we had come up with what we call, this compromise alternatives, that, well, I guess, this is where I'm confused and trying to understand, because I feel like, doesn't this remove some of the problem? I mean, we're talking about the, the manor one, and we're, in our meetings on that, we say, this is gonna be a problem for 20, 30, 40 years. And I feel like, and this is a, this is a property, and we're, we're abandoning the right-of-way, and adding it to a different piece of property, doesn't that, just, that's too...
And I feel like, if this is a, if this is a property, and we're, we're vending the right of money and adding it to a different piece of property, doesn't that, just, that's two lots? In a sixty by sixty square that lasts up and paid for something, so we don't have to worry about?
You could make that case, they get this, goes, consult that.
But, y'all, staff doesn't give a fuck.
I think staff, yeah, I think, I think staff, in our dealings with other property owners, these different subdivisions, the plating issues, has concerns about it.
I mean, what about lease, I mean, what kind of term are you talking about? How you sell the property, man? They can trump it, and lease by the city, but, but license to the city, I can remove from it.
Sure, and, and so certainly we could work out the terms of the lease, again, I think, from staff perspective, when we discuss.
So, there's your guy that reached out and put his hands on somebody, and I just asked the supervisors to reassign him to somewhere else.
I think why we would be reliant, the ability to cancel that, frankly, with any kind of basis or agreement or contracts on certain things. What would cause us to cancel that license agreement, other than we have found some bigger solution for the area, or move down that path? Frankly, I'm not sure that we would. Um, but what it does is, it doesn't move us into this decision.
Alright, take advantage of my questions. I think, I mean, just my comments, obviously there's an absurdity to council. Where, where random elected individuals are making decisions on these kind of things. Um, but I think sometimes an absurdity is a benefit. And, in my opinion, I think this is one of those situations where absurdity is a benefit. You can have someone who, who is not tied down by uh, kind of the norms and ordinance and requirements. They can say, hey, there's some cabinet court, there's also a property owner and a bunch of unused land, and we can, we can legally solve that. With the, with the way of the, the minute, and council law, and we start, and we use these things.
And he's gone.
It would be present in seconds for future cases. Uh, and that's probably the biggest concern about this man being missing, property located. You know, I, I know in a number of other cases where we have required property owners to do things they didn't necessarily wanna do. And not that we had to get the actual, what their plan used was, but, you know, we were thinking about what was gonna happen forty years from now when that property turns over. And here, there was the child.
That one corporal.
Obviously, it's part of our growth, and so we, you know, we need this.
Thank you.
Allow him to do what he wanted, straight to him. I think, you know, in the future, just have a go at playing himself.
Hey Andy, I was just gonna go out and have a smoke, man.
Sure.
They uh, sergeant reassigned the guy that put his hands on somebody, so I checked. So like, did you try to speak to him and all the way over here? Don't lie.
That's putting him on the spotlight, man.
I was like, surely you're gonna get a ticket. But I was like, well, they're all over here, so.
They doing alright?
They're good. Everything's kinda calmed down? Did you get to talk to the mayor yet?
No, no.
Not yet? They gonna do that a little later?
No, no.
You gonna decline that right now?
I'm standing back.
Okay, that's, that's understood. Understood, understood. So, it went off. Just, the, the police did, they were open except for one guy, uh, he was not appropriate.
Yeah.
And uh, but we just got here.
They got the, which one, the one that threatened?
Yeah, where, where you go? Hey, guess who's here? Michelle Barrientis. The constable. Do you know how to bring the zoom out?
That's bullshit.
You getting fucked? Yes, I went to Samsung. Oh, you got, that'll get ultra?
Okay.
Yes. Guys, I'm sorry, uh, I got, I just switched over from iPhone to Android today, so I got the new Samsung Galaxy. And I'm uh, yeah, I'm still learning how to zoom and stuff, so stupid phone.
Everybody knows I'm on my way, so I made, I made it safely.
El Gringo, yeah, El Gringo made it. And there's S A ecstasy prez.
You live?
Yeah.
Andy's in the house.
Guys, I'm gonna mute it, I'm gonna keep it running, uh, in case anything goes down, but I'm gonna mute it for now, I'm gonna have a smoke, all that good junk. And then I'll start looking at comments, maybe. Or you know what?
At least you're up in the car.
You wanna just keep the livestream going in case something goes on?
Yeah.
Okay, here. There you go.
I heard you go smoke. Look away, man. You being with it?
If you have concerns that, as council always said, that we are setting precedent. And that has become a form of, sort of, proving things like this, that we are finding ourselves in a situation where it hasn't. And we have that challenge.
All I care is, I couldn't, I don't know. And I'm not being on council service, Mr. Larson, but this is the first time I've ever seen something, and I'm up to council, who I don't look at. First time I've ever seen something.
Yeah, again, I, as I said, I think this is the first right of way vacation pad. We can all certainly wait and see, you know, if this is true, what this means to another property.
I'm just gonna leave. I, I don't wanna take a lot of time with this, but the sickless thing would be the lease, and that really doesn't, I, I don't like the idea of a man, a property jump again. But we did the lease, uh, that, that would be workable, uh, in this situation.
I, I think from a staff perspective it is, I think, again, the, the property owner, it didn't work for them unless they, they softly come forward. But I think the license agreement works for staff, they says it wasn't positive, and I think it's something that perhaps we could replicate in, in live hotels and other.
Okay, good. So, in order to do that, uh, we need to deny this particular ordinance, and then you can sit down and, and start drafting a, this agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm not a lawyer, I'll let you do it. Okay, uh, mayor, make a motion.
Councilmember Davis. Um, this, this one might sound interesting, um, looking at the package, because in the package, we've got two guys, and they both look like they're style pros in there. Um, and if we break up the Google map or Google bird perspective first. What I find interesting about this is it's, it's a dead end road. I mean, it's just, if, if urban lane was ever built, and of course it's not right now, it's not gonna go anywhere beyond that green block. Uh, it's not like it's gonna go forward into Carolina North and time into Diamond Falls, because there's houses in there. So, to me, it's basically, again, we inherited a plat from a paper subdivision that was not done by anything in the city, way before the city broke, brought this land into the boundaries. So, what's the difference between ending urban lane, where urban lane ends right now, or at the front of the, the side? So, what's the real impact?
Okay. There you go.
I, I, you know, the chief's not here, so just like we got those city council people recalled. I think, I think the next step is gonna be recall any city council members that don't get rid of the chief, because the chief should have been here.
Mm-hmm.
Chief should have been here. Now. Coward.
That was shit, right?
Yeah.
There you go. Go ahead, man. Nice cam. Film, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to him. Talk shit?
Does anybody have any questions? Anybody has any questions, or has any events?
Andy's in the house, for sure. Actually, I'm outside. Todd, how you doing, man? Dumbass. Be snapping nobody's fingers in them windows, man.
Alright, I'm outta here, guys. Yeah, like I said, I wasn't expecting me to show up.
I know, I know.
Oh, that, oh, that Sam's at Johnson, no, not Sam's, right there by Johnson. I saw the text, and you said you were there, I'm like, let's go.
Goddamn.
There's not gonna be any problems, as long as that one corporal keeps held at bay.
Man, I'll see you.
Yeah, I know, man, I know.
Alright, what's going on in the chat group here? Yeah, man, so we are at, we're at shirts city council. Can everybody hear me okay? I don't have to speak up, I got a new phone, so. Can everybody hear me okay? Give me a one if you can hear me okay. If not, I'll speak up. Alright, good, so we're at the shirts city council meeting. Um, a bunch of protesters came, they're still inside, uh, they had their usual council meeting, and then at one point, all the protestors, protestors, uh, uh, the citizens started chanting. Uh, no justice, no peace, things like that. Um, and uh, you know, that, that died down, they continued their meeting. Um, they didn't respond to that, uh, they didn't have a, a whole bunch of police here like Leon Valley does, and uh, you know, which is good. Uh, they don't need them. And uh, so then, then there was another protest a little later. Um, that one was a, a little bit more of a protest. Uh, the city council decided to end the meeting and, and they were ushered out. Uh, and uh, the people spoke, the people spoke. Um, by all accounts, the police did the, the, what they were supposed to do, they kept their hands off people, and they let people speak. Uh, with the exception of one uh, heavyset corporal, y'all saw him. Um, I recommended to the sergeant that uh, he take that officer and reassign him somewhere, because he does not know how to deal with people, and he's not there anymore. So, good, kudos to the serge for, for reassigning that dude. Uh, I went and told that dude that the people are mad because of use of force, and here you are, reaching out and touching somebody when you don't need to. And his answer was, uh, I'm just doing what the mayor tells me to do. It's disrupting a meeting. And I said, come on, man, this is not the time to be enforcing some piddly misdemeanor, these people are not disrupting anything, they are, they, no. So, yeah. So, so far, so good, the police are being appropriate, uh, they did call for more officers when everything was going on, but those officers have since left. Uh, they went back out on the streets, they're, they're not hanging around outside or anything like that. Uh, the uh, dur- during the uh, during the protest, when things were getting a little out of control. Not really out of control, but more, more out of control than the, you know, bureaucrats and, and city officials would like it to be. Um, hey, you too, alright, see you later. Hey, you got my number, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always available and, and uh, I'm always looking for the next. I'm, I'm always looking for the, the next, uh, you know, dirty, dirty thing, so.
Give me your number.
It's two one oh, five four zero.
Five four zero.
One seven two six.
Seven two six.
Yes.
Yes.
And you'll, you should appreciate the fact that uh, our, our interview, our interview?
Yes.
I never published it, but I recorded that entire thing, and I never published that, I never published it, so maybe you can appreciate that.
I appreciate that, me too, I did the same thing.
There wasn't no need for that, there, there wasn't no need for it, so, it's all good.
But before that?
Uh, Jack, Jack, Jack Miller.
I was with him at McDonald's.
Oh, TX Sheepdog is, is what it is, that's what you were trying to buy.
Um, yeah, just staying busy, got my thing going too, fighting with that, and um, yeah.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know, sure.
You look tall on TV.
I'm, I'm gonna just back up right here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's easy there.
Yeah, it's a, thank you, yeah, same contest, I mean, you guys are doing the same thing. I'll shoot you a text in a little bit.
Everything, everything about me is uh, confidential. Uh, you know Leon Valley raided my house, and I can tell you, one of the biggest things they were trying to do was find out my sources. Um, it, we, we have the emails and all the messages about my sources. Because one day I was in to talk to a police detective, and they said he wasn't there, and I was like, okay, he's at his desk right now, and this is what he's doing. Tell him to come out here, and then they were like, oh shit. Sure, sure, sure. But they, but the point is, they never, they never found my sources, they had my computers and everything, they never found my sources.
Yeah, those guys, uh, and they do a lot of shit in the Al Valley, that I don't agree with.
I don't know what he's thinking, it's, it's common sense, it's law.
Savagio needs to, it's on him.
Oh, FBI interviewed me a few weeks ago as a victim, investigating Savagio. We'll see, we'll see what happens.
I think he knows what's coming.
You know, it takes time.
Yeah, give me a holler.
Alright, cool, cool, awesome.
Good night.
Yeah, so uh, yeah, they left and uh, that's pretty much it, where, where was I at? Where was I at? I, I was, I was narrating something. Um, where was I at, guys? Tell me where I was at. Everyone's calmed down, you know, chief should have been here, he wasn't. Tucked tail and uh.
Yes, I'm here, you're safe.
Oh, is that your body camera? I like that.
Exactly, people were like, Andy, you've been getting there for an hour, hour.
I'm, I'm cross between, I wanna talk to people out here, but I wanna uh, give you guys the livestream too, so I really don't know.
Are you livestreaming that? Where are you at, are you on Facebook or?
I'm on YouTube.
You too?
I'll, I'll give you the info. I got about forty thousand people that follow me, and I, I mainly focus on police that are behaving badly. And I, I'm not known for my limits.
You're not on Facebook then?
I am on Facebook.
Can I catch you from there?
You can, I don't think the YouTube is linked though.
You don't think, let me go to YouTube then.
Nah.
Let me go straight to YouTube then.
You can go, you can Google if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
It'll pop up, uh, TXSH.
TXSH.
EEP.
EP?
EEP.
EEP.
DOG.
DOG.
We've got there so far.
Texas Sheepdog?
Yeah, seven two. Yeah, man, uh, the, that heavyset corporal, I forget his name, but uh, he's been reassigned.
That's where you're at.
To a post where he's not gonna be dealing with people directly one-on-one. Um, Todd got that whole interaction on, on, on video, and uh...
Which one, the one you signed?
He's definitely not one to be, uh, dealing with.
Oh, you're from Hello?
Yeah, the guy that was reassigned, so when everything went off, uh, the second part, and you know, people were not gonna quiet down. Uh, of course, the police had to form a line, and, and they were doing their usual line thing, but uh, majority of the police officers were doing their appropriate thing. Um, I was in there telling the police, uh, hey, don't touch nobody, don't touch nobody, you know, that, that's why people are here, because you guys don't know how to use force. And right now, there's no reason to touch anybody. And you know, they agreed, and, and they kinda backed off with their little, you know how they do their little fingers on you as they're trying to get you to move back? And uh, anyway, this one heavyset corporal, the one I was focusing on, you know, next thing you know, there was a ruckus. And you know, he, you know, he's laying his hands on somebody, so uh, he quickly realized that wasn't the best decision to make, and he backed off. But the point is, uh, everything, once everything was settled down, everybody was allowed to come back in, I went over to him and I said, hey, man. You know, unless somebody's life is in danger, you, you don't, you don't need to touch nobody. And he said, oh, well, I'm just following orders from the mayor, and it's disrupting a, a meeting. And I'm like, come on, man, thi- this is not the time to be uh, trying to enforce a misdemeanor of disrupting a meeting, number one. Number two, as law enforcement officers, and I can say this because I went through the same training.
Follow the law, not your.
Um, we have, we're all taught, there's a spirit of the law, and then there's a letter of the law. And the letter of the law, the letter of the law means that if somebody's disrupting a, a city council meeting, you arrest them, that's the letter of the law. And then you have the spirit of the law, and the spirit of the law means that... if you have, if you're outnumbered ten to one and you have a group of people that are upset about your use of force and all they're doing is yelling and speaking, the spirit of the law says you just let them speak. You don't enforce the letter of the law. Just let them speak. But this, this cop did not understand that. And so I went and told the sarge, "Hey, you need to take that fat corporal and you need to put him somewhere else where he's not gonna be face-to-face with people because he is a loose cannon. And, and if shit goes off again, that's gonna be your problem. I want you guys to be successful, but if you don't reassign that dude, I hope you fail." And next thing you know, he's getting text messages and he reluctantly went to the back. So, uh, I, you know, I suggested the sarge assign him maybe to escort the, uh, city council to the back if, if they need to, but he doesn't need to be dealing with people. So, mission accomplished. And the rest of the officers, for the most part, I would say that they, they were appropriate. They probably did not need to be reaching their little fingers out and, and tapping on people. Uh, but I don't think they're gonna do that again, uh, so.
I'm doing good. My name's Jack Miller.
Jack Miller?
Yes, sir.
Grady Morse?
Grady Morse?
Yeah. What'd you know the rule of the law? Oh, I know a lot about it. Here, Andy, hold on to this and why don't you take this back inside?
That's better. I don't know how to work. Jack's a neat piece of shit. Anyhow, so, okay, here now? Jack's talking to a retired police chief. I'm not sure from where, around here. He's asking us about the law. I said, "Yeah, we know the law." He just handed the phone to me and just fucking walking around. I don't wanna go in there. It's too quiet. I'll fall asleep. I miss all the action. They're talking about naming new streets and shit right now and there, so it's not why I'm here. Shit, there he is. I don't know if these guys wanna be on camera or not, so... I'll step back and view, so... See shirts. I fucking hate driving out here. Goodbye, piggy. Get this in here.
Did everything they could to make sure they could throw an extra couple kicks or something, you know? It was unnecessary, you know? Did they follow policy? I don't know. If they did follow policy, it was wrong, you know? It's, it's, it's a matter of, it's a matter of what's humanly right. You know what I mean? Would you do that to your own son running? If you see him screaming, banging at the door, calling for his dad, he's obviously not a threat, you know what I mean? Stan, what would've happened if he would've just stood back and said, "Hey, calm down," you know what I mean? It could've ended right there, you know what I mean? I got the video.
Yeah, the, the, kicking, kicking is not sanctioned in any police department. They don't teach that. It is illegal. Bet they do it all the time.
So, the question, Steve, what is the use of force modality in the police department?
Right, so, so obviously they didn't have a, a opportunity to use force against him, right, until he got to the border.
Was he a free felon?
He was a free, well, if you don't, in Texas, if you don't stop, then the lights come on.
You're telling me? Yeah.
But at that point, he was a felony.
The traffic signs, the killer starts.
If, if you don't stop, you're in front of a car and you're three from the police and the vehicle's a felony. That's, that's a separate crime.
Okay, so...
So, they were pursuing a felony at that point.
Was it red light? What was it?
So, it's gonna show up, what happened again with the six?
Then my question there, what is the policy in the Shirts Police Department about to use the force in situations like that?
Right, so they're, they're governed, they're governed by...
Do they have a dial-down plan? Do they have?
There, there is a use of force continuum that's followed by all Texas police agencies. And it, you know, it's national for that matter.
He's right here. I mean, it could've stopped right here, you know what I mean? A human being would just say...
This is where she starts to kick him.
She winds up and uses his foot. She winds up. See? Now, he resisting when you're on top of him.
Yeah, he, he's going, nowhere he can go. How can he turn around?
When they turn him around, that's where they start needing him. Or goes a taser again. Now, here comes the knee.
There you go. She winds up. You're bored, man. I can't take anymore of that shit. Yeah, and the father comes. Okay, the father comes in, so... Listen to this asshole up here. What's his crime right here? This is a crime that's fucked up. That's a crime right there. That's a crime. Mm-hmm. That is a crime, sir. And I think he's been reassigned, I think? Yeah, you don't say that on my front doorstep. He's beating my son. I mean, that guy showed a lot of restraint. His father's right there. In a Cadillac. That's his father. Uh, I'm not, you know, I'm gonna tell you, I, I would've gone nuts. I would've ended up getting at least shot in the leg. I mean, she just, that's just me though.
He did the same thing to me one day. Kicked my door in like that. I'm standing inside there.
Yeah.
Kicked my door in.
Mm-hmm.
It don't matter if he was, it don't matter what he was doing. The police don't get to murder and beat even felons.
Yeah, yeah, you just, you just don't do that. I mean, you don't beat someone's kid up on the front doorstep not expecting to do nothing. I would've gone nuts. And I don't care. I would've gone to jail.
Protections that take away the consequence of their actions.
What drives police departments? What drives police departments?
You guys, he just handed me his phone and said, "Go with it," so. He said, "Keep it live, though." So... Goddamn, I just had surgery on my face the other day. Fucking painful. Had a bone graft. I'm gonna do it again next week, too. So, I look like I got punched by a cop.
A monkey knows that you don't do a person that way.
True, but they do. So, how do you change your mindset?
Okay, none of these cops in here, that cop can say, "I didn't know." No, you know. You did it because you knew you were gonna get away with it or you think you're gonna get away with it. And so, we have been for a long, we have been, we have been for a long... I'm sure that wasn't the first time she did it, so, yeah. They don't know her, but, but based on, based on the situation where I saw her and the situation where she was justified in using force and he, for that matter, because the most egregious thing that I find is the officer that threaten homeowners. You're gonna get it if you don't relax. I'm sorry, I don't have to...
You're gonna get it next.
I could come out here and be the totally opposite of relax and do nothing to push you to do anything to...
And that's a crime itself.
But, but, but I've been aggressed.
That's right, that's right.
Situation she was in where she was ju- fully justified using force against a guy. She did exactly what a bad cop...
He sent it to me.
And that is starting to inflict pain because there's ten things that she had in her arsenal that she's been trained to do to get compliance. And I'll, I'll give you a, a sample of what I mean. George Floyd.
Oh, man.
There is a thing called pressure point pain compliance. Any one of y'all, even you, going through the training that you've been through, you know damn well, if I have you in cuffs, I can make you get in the back of my car.
You can twist somebody's pinky and, and get them to do what you want. And it's a resort to violence.
Uh, if you're a tough guy, maybe I need a second officer to put your head this way, wide, go this way, right, on that one. But you know damn well, sorry, you're getting in the car. Okay, so why didn't the officers do that with George Floyd? Didn't he wanna get in the car? So, what did they do? They took him to the other side? They took him to the ground? They could've gotten him in the car with some pressure point pain compliance without any injury. Why didn't they do that? I'm gonna tell you why.
It's anger. Show me who's, show you who's boss. That's what it is.
Bad cops, some cops, bad cops.
Something, yeah.
Some cops don't do that. Cause it's not as fun if you just get in the car. It's more fun if I, if you don't get in the car, I'll take you. It's more fun.
What, how many times you see a bad cop use something and you don't even?
It's more fun to, that's a totally different story. It's more fun if I throw him to the ground. Because then he might kick. And if he kicks, he gets a hug tie. And when a hug tie, when he's yelling, he might spit. Whoop, get to his face, spit mask. Maybe we get to tase him too. That's more fun. That's what bad cops do.
Theatrics, Jack.
They wanna inflict the pain on people sometimes and, and, and they operate outside of policy because policy is what's best practice. And best practice in that situation would be pressure point pain compliance. Why not?
So, when will we be able to hold in civilly liable? For that act?
Whatever. Well...
They know, they know.
Can we sue the cop for that?
Right now, it's, it's...
I don't think we can.
Right now, it's uphill, right now, it's uphill battle.
No, no, if, if the cop breaks policy, then, then he should be civil, criminally and civilly liable. If, if he causes injury.
If the police officer used excessive force, sure, there's, there's a way to handle it.
If it's under investigation, no?
What I'm saying is not that the county should be liable or the city, but he personally should be liable. You wanna see that clean up real quick?
Yeah, so...
That's what we need to start doing.
So, here's the deal. Thirteen years, thirteen years dealing with people as an official in situations where I had to use force. I wouldn't at least get scared if you sued me if I have to use force against you. I really didn't care.
But what I'm saying is, I don't think I belong.
I'm just letting you know. I'm letting you know the mentality. Let me tell you about the mentality. Number one, it ain't gonna come out of my pocket. Because the laws are set up to say that it ain't gonna come out of my pocket. Plus, I belong to several organizations that are gonna provide me attorneys. So, I really don't care if I, what happens to you.
But what if it could come out of your pocket? That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying, if it could came out of your pocket...
That could be misconstrued.
We're gonna stop. We're gonna fix it.
Corrupted.
And see, not, not, not even out of the individual's pocket.
That's what I was trying to say.
If we can, if we can make it to where officers are insured, to where the insurance company is holding them liable, that way you can't even get licensed if you, once you, once you've had so many complaints, that insurance company is gonna say, "You know what? Whoa, we're not gonna even, we're not even gonna issue a peace officer license. We're not gonna insure you as a peace officer because the odds of you getting sued again or hurting somebody..."
That's not the way, that's not the way it is right now.
I know it's not, but that's what we need to...
While we've been, while we've been...
You leap at the wheel. Laws and rules have been created to protect these officers. They wanna defend capitalism so much and that capitalism fits the problem, you know what I mean? So, we gotta get laws changed, right?
Yep.
I'm not a law changing guy. I'm the guy that wants...
Well, there's certain benefits that need to be re-examined, you know?
Insurance got a lot of pools. I mean, when you start making so many insurance for so to, so to speak.
It's not broken.
Figuratively speaking.
I've been telling people so long.
Figuratively speaking. It was designed this way.
Yes.
It's working perfectly.
Certain benefits need to be re-examined.
Look, look.
I, I mean...
Folks come in here and they do what they do. They're not following the rules. They're not following the...
Taking advantage of it, man. The system.
You can't blame them because when I came here tonight, after watching that video, I thought Shirts was a place where you didn't have to follow rules. That's what I thought. I'm just going by the example set forth by the police.
I thought that wasn't a key.
That's what it seemed like to me. Now, it seems to be a little different. I don't know. Maybe the police more operate in there. Except for one guy. We took care of him, but...
Watch you down here, just ask.
Because I'm upset with police officers tarnishing my values, tarnishing my...
Thank you.
Thank you. I was a cop for thirty years and it pisses me off when I see them doing that. And she did not have to do that. And they didn't have to do that. They did not use appropriate measures.
Have you heard of LEAP?
Yes.
Oh, are, are you a part of them?
No, I'm, no.
Law enforcement against prohibition? They, it was law enforcement against prohibition. Now it's law enforcement action partnership. But it's former cops, VA agents, everybody banding together to end the drug war.
I can get in line with what you're saying because I've said that to you before, that, that, uh...
Judges and so the special...
It's everybody getting together to basically end the drug war. And I actually understand.
Listen, what I've got...
It makes me...
Started off just to end the drug war, but now it's, it's branched into so much more, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
I get that, but... Um, actually, right now, uh, I just wrapped up a special with Dr. Phil. I agreed to walk homeless downtown San Antonio for two years and, uh...
Yes.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Where does that come from? Where does that come from? Yeah. Where does that come from? And, uh, well, then I went into prison. I agreed to do two years in prison. I had hidden cameras in there. I just got out. There were two bad apples in that whole situation. She didn't know what to do. Stop fighting.
You know, the problem, the problem, chief nowadays is, is more bad apples.
Only a cop saying that would understand why it's funny. You know what I'm saying?
Eight different times.
Yeah, I heard of that. She, both, that's the male officer, that male officer. Bam, on my door.
Sure.
And she took, and you told me...
Literally two years down there.
You get back here, you do the same.
And, uh...
We got issues.
I had a brother that he...
It ain't, you know, first of all...
It's also a crime.
First of all, that's my house.
Mm-hmm.
And secondary, you can arrest them without doing that. And if you...
Let me have a smoke and I'm gonna stand down with you, so I'm not blowing on you.
That's alright. At that point, you put your hands on me, we got issues. Right. But I'm sick, what I'm sick and tired of
If you don't feel...
The officers that are tarnishing the banks and they, they seem to think that it's okay to do this and it's cops like me out here saying, "Man, you're embarrassing me."
Yeah.
You're embarrassing me, man.
Oh, okay.
And I don't like it.
It's a big slap in the face. I don't know you, but I'm gonna assume that your service was good and if that's the case...
Man, thirty years, man. I remember drawing my gun.
So, when they act like that, that's just a big slap in the face of everything you did.
Can I say, can I just say, a bunch of cops.
Exactly.
Are you a veteran, chief?
Boy.
Yes.
See, and that's another thing. Veteran, veteran conference.
Listen, I taught in an academy.
Yes.
I taught in, uh...
I took an O two.
Police academy.
Okay.
And I used to ask them, raise your hand. How many of you guys have ever had a, had a fight? These newer kids? I made one, two of them raise their hand. They don't wanna fight. They don't wanna defend themselves. They sit behind these consoles and play these games and stuff, man. They don't wanna defend themselves. So, when it comes to a physical action, you tell them about levels of force. You got ten things that you can, you know, you can depend on other than this.
Yeah.
Right, right.
You know, sometimes the best way to defeat a person, man, don't get in the fight. Just don't fight. You don't have to fight everybody. You come into contact.
Oh, wow.
They didn't have to do it to that kid. They didn't have to run this kid to their door. Just to pause, pause the food you're putting in, doesn't mean that you should. That's all I'm saying. Because if they're not gonna knock on the door, they stood there and dad comes to the door. What's going on? The son, man, I really like, I was gonna take. I guarantee they just died, they been dead all day, and they couldn't arrest this kid without all that.
I have not confirmed yet, but I do believe that these officers fully aware, were fully aware of who they were pulling over.
I do too.
And it was not just a matter of justice. It was a matter of, we gonna get this kid? Or maybe even I would go so far as to say, "We're gonna get this boy." Uh, I haven't confirmed all that yet, but it's definitely there.
I, you know, I hate to think that way. I didn't think, we're all victims, man. I, I look. I understand the racial thing. It's a racial thing, it is. But, you know, um.
I'm digging, and I, I do believe this thing.
Yeah, no, I, no, I believe it too. What I mean, what I mean is, um.
But when you tell them that you know the law, then they don't, they understand.
But what I mean is when the protests come around, okay, it's, some messages and different messages, we're all, we're all citizens. We're all victims. I mean, we're not just, just Black Lives Matter. We're not just, uh, I don't see if, we're all victims of, potential victims of police violence. I mean, you know.
If they do this in church, Texas, then you can understand why St. Louis and Minneapolis is a block, I'm saying. And why New York, cause this is in church, Texas. This training thing is souped down into Texas. I get it. This souped down to church, Texas.
I don't, I don't condone, I don't condone.
And so, if they're doing this in church, I guarantee they'll do it in Congress. I guarantee they do it in live.
I don't, I don't. Burning stuff down, but I completely understand where people are tired of asking politely. And flipping over chairs gets attention, and it gets, you know?
People are fed up.
For a lack of better words, flipping over chairs on, are you, are you know about San Antonio? Okay, so flipping over chairs on the east side of San Antonio is one thing. Flipping over chairs out in Stone Oak is another thing. And it needs to happen because you need to get some more people's attention. Not just my attention over here on the east side where I live, but we need to get some attention of the people who are in their houses, watching on TV saying.
And you do that by, uh, getting their children involved in it. See, cause when their children, when little, when little Bessie start telling mom, "You're lying." Cause mom, I, I got a friend who such and such, so and so, and I was there and I saw them being a victim of this. I said, "Mom, that's not the way it is." And at that point, you have conflict. And that conflict is about Dallas, and it's either an adherent or disadhem. And I would submit to you that it's always better that, that you stand up and be like the radicals that we, in my generation. In our generation, man. This, they, they were glad. I, I, I'm like, in my generation, we had mom and mom. So we had to choose between.
No, they had no argument.
By any means necessary or peace. This and there, they don't give a fuck. They will burn this joke down. From the ground up.
And, and it seems to me the smart thing to do would not.
It don't even, it don't even impact people of color and community. It impacts all of us. When I say COVID does not discriminate, it does not. I see it every day. So, while they're sitting up there, just talking or laughing or whatever they're doing, they're not being smart. They're not being smart. It's so sad. Because at the end of the day, if they get there, it's not a pretty sight. And they're up at you, so they're not like young like you where you can fight it off. They're gonna have issues.
Okay, here comes.
Right, let's go ahead and do the vote call confirmation. Our state secretary here, the dentist, will provide the vote call confirmation. Consent agenda items one and eight from nine, heading discussion items number two, ten, and eleven. Is this?
Consent agenda items one, and five through nine, let's just write that councilor, David, second to the vice, Councilman Dela. Secretary of Justice Scott, Councilman Davis, Larson, Dela, Gagio, Hayward, and yes, someone, another, no, Bush, and Dallas. Item number two, resolution number twenty-six, Dela, one, nine, emotional threat, God, Councilman David, second to God, and Bush, and Scott. Senator Scott, Councilman Davis, Larson, Dela, Gagio, Hayward, and yes, someone, another, no, Bush, and Dallas. Item number ten, ordinance number twenty, pass thirty-seven on first reading, emotional threat, Councilman Larson, second to the vice, Councilman Dela. Senator Scott, Councilman Davis, Larson, Dela, Hayward, and yes, Councilman Gagio, other than that, Bush, and Dallas. Item number eleven, ordinance number twenty, page thirty-five. Emotional threat to, uh, approved on first reading, by Councilman Larson, second to the vice, Councilman Hayward. Councilman Davis, Larson, and Hayward, other than that, Councilman Dela, and second to the vice, and Dallas.
Thank you, Mrs. Dennis. We will continue the court job discussion, regarding, uh, the COVID nineteen virus.
They, they all, they all see it. They all, they all see it. You should take down my YouTube channel so you know who I am.
Oh, that YouTube channel?
Yeah, take it down. That way you can see what I do and who I am, so you know I'm trustworthy and. TX. But I can't, yeah, that's, that's for my protection.
A young man in the Dallas, uh, from the police officer going in the wrong house. No one, no one that was non-black said, going in there and investigating, they said he was smoking weed. I don't care what he was smoking.
Doesn't matter.
He was in his own house eating ice cream. And then she left and went on vacation with her married man, but they didn't put that out on the paper.
Whether somebody's committed a crime or not, newsflash, the police can't beat them up either.
Exactly.
You just can't, no.
I've been here thirty years, right down the street, church. Been on three double nine. And I've been, and I've been at court so many times. They know me by name.
Nah, he's too tall.
How are you doing?
He, he's too tall. He's, he's about your, your height.
So I got some problems going on in Bear County with one of my moms. Her son has been hogtied, beat up by the guards, been stabbed.
Black lady.
While in solitary confinement. Yeah, Carolyn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to her, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, Carolyn Thomas.
Yeah, I referred her to my attorney, Solomon, and she has just had communicated with him about what was going on.
Okay.
Haven't heard anything since.
Oh, the someone in a different state?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, she told me. Okay, so that was you.
Yes, yeah.
Can I get your number?
Yeah. Two, one, zero, five, four, zero. Let me get off this, let me get off this, uh, this. All right, guys, so, so everything's done here. Everything's good to go, so I'm gonna get off the livestream. Thank you for watching. Thank you for having my back. Uh, more to come. We're not done in shirts. Um, they're still, they still haven't provided answers. The officers are still on the street. Um, they're still investigating, which is complete bullshit. It's a cover-up. And, um, I'm gonna make it my hobby. They're right in my backyard. They're only miles from where I'm at, so stay tuned.